President.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Christ.
President.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Good. So tonight, I'm doing the invocation. Everybody raise your hands, please. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and ask that you bless our city in this time of discord. To give us wisdom that we make decisions that are for the well-being of the hard-working families that live here, and not based on bias or our own self-interest. Give us the courage to make the best decisions regardless of how unpopular they may be in the moment. Help us to do what's right.
Yes, Lord.
And give strength to deputies Trevor Kirk, Philippi Alejandre, and Timothy Gardner in this time of persecution. And give their families the strength to endure these times without the fear
Yes, Lord.
that accompanies times like this.
Yes, Lord.
We pray for this in Jesus' name.
Yes, sir.
Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Please remain standing. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Is there anything to be removed?
Yes, sir. We need to remove item 11 of the consent calendar. It was agendized as a city council matter. It is a Cal-Choice matter. There is no urgency to the item. We'll bring it back at our next council meeting for approval. That's CC 11.
Okay, and tonight, we have some proclamations. Who's going to help me do that? Daryl. Daryl, come help me. Hi, guys. Tonight, we're issuing proclamations to five of our deputies. On the early morning of August 22nd, our community faced a terrifying situation. An elderly couple was confronted by a violent intruder in their home. Our officers arrived at the scene and were faced with a situation that could have escalated into death. But what transpired instead was a remarkable display of restraint, judgment, and profound reverence for life. The suspect, possibly under the influence of a powerful hallucinogen, was armed and threatening. Our officers faced with a clear deadly force situation chose restraint and to back away and engage in verbal de-escalation. They risked their own lives patiently attempting to disarm the suspect without causing harm to anyone. I want to take this moment to recognize and applaud the officers involved. Deputy Juan, I'm going to get the names mixed up, but Bibian, is that right? Deputy Francisco Sandoval. You know, it took me three days to draw this proclamation. And he missed it?
Okay.
Deputy James Alvarado. Deputy Travis Lang Long. Travis Long. Deputy Logan Simi. Deputy Jonathan Zabin. Deputy Cindy Thimbres. All that work. Thanks, guys. We are in your debt. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you get a root picture of you guys?
Yeah, that's a good idea. You want to do that?
Captain, can you ask them all to come down?
Okay, we removed item 11, is that right? Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to accept the consent calendar is currently comprised pulling CC 11.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Let's vote. Indictment unanimous. New business item one. Lancaster Police Department, 223 Dodge Durango fleet purchase. We'll hear from Allison Burns.
And I'm going to hand off to Rod Armelin.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. Come to you today to speak with you regarding the purchase of six police vehicles. As you recognize, we're about to go into a new area here where we're going to have our Lancaster Police Department, our own version of a police department. And that's going to happen soon. We're expecting to have our officers in place and working by January. With that in mind, we're going to need vehicles for them to operate in. So the need for those vehicles is essential, as it is, in my opinion, the symbol, the thing that the community sees and understands and says, that's the City of Lancaster officers. So purchasing police vehicles, any vehicle for that matter, is becoming increasingly difficult due to chip issues and everything else. It's very tough. So we were able to locate six vehicles. And we're picking a particular vehicle. We want to get Dodge Durangos. And we're doing that because we want folks to recognize that we are the Lancaster Police Department. So we wanted something different than the Explorers that the Sheriff's Department is driving. So we were able to do this through a national purchasing cooperative interlock agreement where we located a company by the name of Dana Safety Supply. And they specialize in police vehicles, and not just vehicles, not just purchasing of the vehicles, but fully equipped, which is highly important. The vehicles will come to us ready to go. They'll have all the necessary equipment needed to go to work in. And we should be able to get those vehicles going through this company by the time our officers hit the ground. So we should have them before January. That would have not been possible to do locally. And that's because to get those vehicles, we would have had to order 2024 vehicles. And we wouldn't be able to receive the vehicles until, I think the earliest was like around April. And then they'd have to go out and be equipped after that. These vehicles are there and prepared, and once we purchase, they'll start to outfit. So.
Did you try?
Yes, sir, we did.
You called the Dodge dealer, the local Dodge dealer?
Yes, sir, we did. We absolutely did. So it was just unfortunate because they were, the only thing they could do was give us those 2024 vehicles. With that, with that number of vehicles coming too played in it as well. So we'll get those vehicles at a total price of $474,000. And that's fully equipped, ready to go, as I mentioned.
That's not each, right?
No, sir. No, sir. That's the total price for six. Police cars are expensive. And as I mentioned, they're hard to come by. Practically every agency out there is trying their best to recoup their fleets right now. So we are asking you to approve us to purchase those six 2023 Dodge Durangos at that price. And we're also asking you to authorize a city manager or designee to execute the National Purchasing Cooperative Interlock Participation Agreement and approve that purchase through the Byboard National Purchasing Cooperative. That's all I have for you today, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
So when do we name you Chief of Police?
So we're aiming for next month, sir. We're aiming for next month to swear me in. And at that time, Lancaster will be, will have its first police department. Yes, sir.
You've been doing a tremendous job this past year putting us together.
I appreciate that, sir. It's a pleasure to work for this city. This is a great city.
We're a better city since you got here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion? Well, do we have any speaker cards? Any discussion? Any questions?
I, just a couple. Is this including tax? Okay, and it's including, and what was the base rate?
So the base rate, I believe, was $52,751 for the vehicle.
So we're paying $27,000 to get them refurbished?
The outfitting of the vehicle is $19,071 to have it completely outfitted.
And the rest is taxed?
And then the rest is taxes.
Motion to approve NV1, 1 and 2.
I will second that motion.
Let's vote. We don't have any pictures of the cars or...
I apologize, sir, we did not, but we'll get you one. It's going to be a beautiful vehicle, and I think you're going to be happy with what you see.
And we're branding them Peace Officers, right?
Yes, sir. It's going to say Police. It's going to say Lancaster Police on the vehicle. And we're already thinking of our motto, because every agency should have a motto. And we'll have that on the vehicle as well. So.
I can't wait. Thanks. That's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rod.
Can we take action on this committee, or are we just announcing it?
For Council Agenda Item 1?
Yes.
You can take action. It's agendized for you to take action, to give direction to staff, or you may simply, as mayor, give us direction.
I love being mayor. David Paul, do you want to speak to it?
I want to hear a little more about our first bit of the thing.
So you want to speak about something you don't know? Okay. I'll get it to you. We went ahead and hired some people who specialize in district, you know, analysis to see if we had a polarization problem. They have reported back, we don't. But at the same time, I would like a committee to look at all of the data and make a decision. And give us a recommendation as to whether or not we should be going to district voting, or whether or not we should keep it the way it is. You still want to speak to it, David?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I thought that's what it was about. And you know, this is a delicate issue, but I'm pretty excited about our new police department and the fact that if we get a neighborhood watch group going and it meets regularly, we can get a FLEX camera in our neighborhood. So that's something that is also appealing to me, working together in the community. But it does seem hard how we'll divide the city up without having east-side districts that have less representation. So I would love to be on the committee, and I want to build a strong neighborhood and district where I live. And I hope everyone else can do the same. And it's up to all of us to fix the future. So if we do it together, that's our best chance. And districts may be good. Let's put that committee together. And I'd like to be on it and see what we can put together for the good of everyone. Thank you, sir.
So I'm just going to go do it.
Okay.
Any objections? Thank you.
Can I make a motion to receive and file?
Yes.
Make a motion to receive and file.
I'll second that motion.
Council reports. Any reports?
Mayor, I have one with Destination Lancaster. Under the new budget for 2324, we approved it on time. And one of our commitments, as we've already had multiple meetings with the city, is our commitment moving forward is for Destination Lancaster to work closely with Marketing Department and Parks and Recreation as part of our business plan for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
I've had a meeting with, as I do monthly, with our homeless staff. And we're going to do some of our own investigating to see about the MetroLink issue, to see if there's really an issue or not. Ken and Mike. MetroLink, we're not sure, but it's something we're going to do and look around. But we also have a couple of groups that are still looking up towards this way. And we understand your position on not making this the safe haven for homelessness. So trying to make sure that we handle our own and not take on everybody else's. So we've been meeting, and we've got a good staff here that we understand it didn't happen overnight, it's not going to be fixed overnight. But we're really trying to find ways to deal with our homeless and to make sure that people are safe, the homeowners are safe, the businesses are safe. I get a lot of emails about that. So we've been really trying to work with the community stakeholders up here and the city staff to see what we can do. We're still having some discrepancies about the numbers. There's still a significant discrepancy that we feel, you know. They still say we're in the hundreds. We feel we may be in the thousands. So we're trying to figure that out. And I think it's based off of when they count and, of course, how nomadic they are. So we've been working on that. So I just want you to know that. And we're really trying to take some aggressive approaches to not just give them a meal and a place to sleep at night, but see what we can do to get them up out of this situation.
Lauren Hughes, three weeks ago, I asked you to make Metro Safe, is it?
Three weeks.
MetroLink.
Thank you so much for clarifying. So just a common miscommunication, I think, on Metro and MetroLink's part is that they are two separate entities. And I am happy to report that MetroLink has seen a positive trend in their safety. It continues to be one of their top priorities at MetroLink. It's something that we talk about every meeting and every opportunity. And in addition to what Daryl's doing, or sorry, Councilman Doris, we have the Olympics and we have the World Cup on the horizon. And those are conversations that we're continuing to have and having now, so that when those two big events do happen, we don't see an increase in the homeless population down here. But I agree with the remarks you had said with regards to finding long-term solutions opposed to, you know, just quick fixes. So yes, Mayor, MetroLink is much safer than it was a year ago. And I applaud MetroLink's staff for making it a priority. Metro, I would have to circle back and get back to you on their stats.
I would like, I would like the riders' survey to how they feel, that they feel safe. Because it doesn't matter if they don't feel safe. But it's an underutilized resource because of people's feelings. And we first have to solve the threat problem, and then we have to solve the perception problem. But I would like to see that happen sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Can I say on MetroLink also, they report to us at the NCTC. And they don't do a very good job of reporting their, the blame, because we pin them down to exactly whose responsibility. But they're taking assets from Santa Clarita. We have an AV line. And they're taking assets from Santa Clarita and moving them to the Lancaster-Palmdale area, which is good for us. But it's still not addressing the Antelope Valley Line. And when we try to pin them down on what the services that we are getting for that, and they do not do a check on, to see if they have a ticket. Okay? They just let them ride and just to see, and there's no disturbances, and therefore, there's no problems. But I would like them to be more clear on what they are doing for the Antelope Valley Line and what citations they are actually writing on the AV line. And because they'll say, they'll write two more citations and say they're up 200%. So they use those numbers. So be very careful. I've just been doing it at the NCTC for a long time, so I'm aware of what they do. But you're doing a great job. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are we going to have a review on what we did last Monday as far as for the council?
If we don't have a video, you would be, this would be the opportunity as the council reports, I'm thinking.
Okay. So the audience knows, we had a joint council meeting with both cities last Monday. We, one of the big issues was the effort at the fairgrounds to put in a large building. That building is a 140,000-square-foot building. It's a little over $90 million. The State of California, the county, the City of Palmdale, the City of Lancaster, the school districts, and maybe the college are all participating with this, so we can use it more and go along in those directions. But this was something that we worked with about having more pickleball courts, more basketball courts, more recreational facilities for the kids, so they have something to do and in one area to do it at. So it's a, we'll be able to do that come, the new building is scheduled to break ground in March of '24. So that's a good thing. One of the other ones was the mosquito abatement. We're looking to, looking into taking over the mosquito abatement for both cities, for doing a JPA with the county. The JPA and everything. So they did what they call a 218 to get more money. It failed. And so we're looking to what the problems are. And we're looking to do a joint project with the City of Palmdale. Another thing is the car dealers. We're trying to get along with the city to the south, which is an easy thing to do if we want to and they want to. But what we're trying to do is do a tax-sharing agreement. The tax-sharing agreement is what's ours is ours, what's yours is yours. And we don't have bidding wars amongst the different corporations to take your money and give it to them to build bigger and better corporations. So we stopped all that, and the two cities are working together with that.
Marvin, you're sounding like a liberal.
I know my audience. The animal shelter. The animal shelter, we're also doing the same thing, and we're looking to, it's costing us for the animal shelter for LA County to pick up a cat costs the city $300, I believe the number was. And that means for one day or for 30 days, but it's $300.
Just to clarify, not that it's $500.
$500. Okay. And it is, our total cost was like $1.9 million, same for the City of Palmdale. So we're seeing if we could do it jointly and do it better and do it together. With that, Mr. Mayor, the deputy that was late, the female deputy.
She wasn't late. She was detained.
I think someone else was detained. Henry? I need a speaker.
Okay, sorry.
I want you to, I want you to hear it. On the early morning of August 2nd, our community faced a terrifying situation. An elderly couple was confronted by a violent intruder in their home. Our officers arrived at the scene and were faced with a situation that could have escalated into tragedy. But what transpired instead was a remarkable display of restraint, judgment, and profound reverence for life. The suspect, under the influence of a hallucinogen, was armed and threatening. Our officers, though faced with a clear deadly force situation, chose to back away and engage in a verbal de-escalation. They risked their own safety patiently attempting to disarm the suspect without causing harm. And they were successful. We acknowledged the other deputies earlier, and with our profoundest gratitude, we would like to acknowledge you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. We got a couple of events that we did, and we're gonna start with National Night Out. We had a fantastic attendance and event. Kudos to Park staff and public safety as well for putting that effort together. It was all public safety. Well, kudos to them. They did an amazing job. We got a short video for that.
The more we're connected to each other, the more likely we are to thrive. Usually what I find is conflict is generated from an inability to communicate with each other. So the more we break those barriers, the, I think, the better everything gets.
I mean, National Night Out is really about what it takes to keep the community safe, and that's a partnership, a partnership between us and you, so that we can work together to keep this city as safe as possible. And that's really why it's important that we have these types of events.
Wonder how long it took us to figure that out?
I don't know if you guys want to add anything, but it was a great event. Thank you, guys. You can applaud, that's awesome. Give us a applause.
[applause]
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. No, there's applause. I was gonna say, it's okay to applaud, yeah.
Okay.
Avenue J, so we've got a number of different capital projects going on. We started breaking ground on the Avenue J interchange project, which as Ken alludes to in the video that we're gonna show, it's been 11 years in the making from when the grant was received. Not a result of us necessarily, but that's just the kind of time it takes and energy and vision it takes to build an interchange in California. So with that, we got a short video, and then the council can add to this story there.
We're breaking ground for the Avenue J, new Avenue J on-ramps and off-ramps. So this is finally gonna complete the interchange here. So this was a long time coming. So over 11 years ago, both Marvin Crest and myself, sitting on the North County Transit Commission, was able to get, measure our funds for these projects. And I think this is really gonna change the dynamics of the city in general. So currently, you know, when people get ready to either leave or come back home, you know, there's only a couple of on-ramps and off-ramps that are easy to use. This is gonna make it so much easier for all the citizens of Lancaster.
I'd like to congratulate our partner, the city of Lancaster, on this milestone, groundbreaking event. Caltrans has partnered with the city of Lancaster and Metro, L.A. Metro, for the improvement of State Route 14.
I would say that, living in a commuter community, transportation is a big deal, and it's very, very important. And so it's nice to see a partnership with the city leaders doing their part to compete, because I'm telling you, there is stiff competition for all these dollars that are available for infrastructure, because we're behind the power curve in California.
That was a pretty weak shovel.
The wind was blowing about, that was about 20 miles an hour.
It was nice to have some staff there. They just showed Ken which end to use, so it was nice.
And I did ask, and I noticed the Caltrans guy never answered me, because I asked him if we could have the interest income on the money they set on since 11 years, and I never got an answer. Could that be a buck or two?
It's amazing how easy it is to be ghosted when they owe you money.
And this is a true shout-out to our Parks team, is the ribbon cut as well. The Super Bloom, as you know, Mayor, you've had a major impact in our public arts effort in leading that effort, and obviously, the council's supporting that from a budget perspective. But Parks team, at the MOA team with our Parks Arts and Recreation, they cut the ribbon on a new art piece, and we have a short video called, about that called "Super Bloom," so here it is.
Five, four, three, two, and one. Let's go.
I think the Super Bloom represents our community. It's vibrant, it's radiant. We have multiple cultures here. We have multiple people here. We have multiple ideas and identities. So I think this is the perfect representation of what this community represents, from aerospace all the way to creativity. Walking up and down the Boulevard is something to just come think. That's what art does. It makes you think. It makes you ponder. It makes you put yourself into art piece and just say, hmm, okay, I see what he was thinking, but this is what it makes me feel.
That's one of many art pieces that we have done, including over 60 murals, and we have many, many more comings. So it's, these are fun events to do, and it really changes the way our community looks and feels and how people interact in it. So it's been a good effort by our Parks team.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's take a 15-minute break, and we'll be back.
I love this city. I came up here in 1998 with one child. All of my children have been raised here, born here. They finished school here. All of them have completed college. I have a wonderful church of over 1,000 members that attend here. Most of y'all in the audience, I know you. Many pastors, I know you. This opens the door for other things. But I want to tell Rex and Marvin, you guys have been great men to work with. I appreciate you. I thank you. To those of you that voted for me, thank you. To those of you that did not vote for me, thank you. You kept me on my knees, and you kept me reading my word. So we all pray for me like I pray for this city, that we continue to come together. The Bible tells us that God hates the spirit of discord, but he also says to stand up for those in need. And we're not supposed to overlook anyone that's been afflicted. So to all the pastors out there, to all those that are not pastors but just come. Fran, I saw a street last night, and it almost said your name. Me and my wife started saying, Fran Sarris. I appreciate you. Appreciate all the meetings. To my friend in the back, we were talking on the Boulevard. I appreciate you, man. Thank you. That's all I have to say, because I'll keep rambling, but thank you for letting me serve this city. I might be back one day, but thank you. I appreciate you guys.
You gotta say the words.
And as of tonight, this will be my last council meeting, because I officially resign as councilman. So y'all can always catch me at 418 West Avenue J or Holy Grail Barbecue. Jesse, I know this caught you off-guard.
I'm going to, I'm going to miss you, Daryl. I have grown very close to you. I have relied on you to tell me when perhaps I was veering in the wrong direction. I've enjoyed our fights. I've enjoyed the things we have done to make this a better city, and I hope you stay involved. And in any capacity you want, I will, you know I'll support you in doing that. It's been a, quite a ride, hasn't it? Yes, it has. We will have a ceremony at the next council meeting, or we may do, we're gonna do something, you know. Let's, let's make it. Thank you. Okay? Thank you. You have definitely changed the city for the better. Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna move on to, I guess I have to do, let the city clerk announce first.
This is a time to address the city council agency authority on non-adjourned matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless a different time limit is announced. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
So it's my understanding that Jesse Smith, who's sitting on the front row, put out a social media ad asking 75 people to come here to pressure me into hiring a black captain of the sheriff's department. What he did not tell you is that I do not hire the captain at the sheriff's station. And, Mr. Smith, I resent you misleading people in that fashion. All, in the past, and Henry will tell you this is how it works, depending on who the sheriff is, he may offer us up a couple candidates and ask the mayor to select. And I think they did that with you. Isn't that right, Henry? With me, the first time, they weren't going to take any chances. They just said, give them a yes or no, and I was presented with one person. The next time, I think we had five candidates, didn't we? I was one of a committee. I appointed, how many on that committee?
Seven.
Seven. Did I appoint you? So you were on the committee. You were there. You were there. And the county had people on the committee. I don't know that it's necessary to go through what occurred, but Sean will tell you. I don't think this has anything to do with the black captain. I think it has to do with the black mayor, is what you're trying to do, and I think you're duplicitous in doing it. The folks need to know that the sheriff appoints the captain, and I would never, ever appoint anybody simply because they were black, white, or brown. There is no way you would ever find my name attached to, "Black captain wanted, whites and Latinos need not apply." That is turning the clock totally around. It is despicable. It, it, it's disgusting to me that anybody would want such a racist approach to hiring anything, anyone, anywhere. And Sean will tell you that during the last time, I was the biggest proponent for the black captain, wasn't I?
Yes.
And then we even hired a black captain, but he would not move from Diamond Bar. I do not want a captain that lives in Diamond Bar, and neither do you. The purpose of a captain is to be in command when there is a crisis. I don't want him on the freeway for two hours before he gets here. You've heard from me. I'll listen to anything you want to say. I'll be happy to listen to anything you want to say, but understand, it is not my decision. My decision, you've already seen, although I didn't know you were African-American, did I? Our chief of police is an African-American, and for you to fan the flames in this fashion was a lie. I think I've said it clear enough. You'll have your chance to respond. Thank you. I said Bishop Hearns.
I didn't know if you wanted to respond to me now or not. Mayor Peres, Vice Mayor Marvin Crest, Councilmember Kinman Daryl Doris, Raj Molly, and to our deputies, to my city manager, Jason, and to the city staff. Now, I asked for maybe an extra 30 seconds or so if I could, because I wanted to say some things to you all as the council members, as my noticing you all over the years. And to Mayor Peres, his mother, father, brothers, and Rob even refers to me as Dad. And I told him he was gonna get me into trouble in that area, but he was worth being in trouble over, because Rob is a really fine guy, his brother, Rob Peres. So I know all of you. I know all you all as council members. And Daryl Doris, and you all, excuse me for not putting titles, that'll just save a little bit for me not going into the titles. But Daryl, known him from a youngster playing music for his family, and then I go back to Angela, who was on the council, a black woman. So I guess I'm saying all of this to say that as far as I'm concerned, now, we have a group of people here that has come together, and I'm a part of them. But I want to say to you, in the presence of, the thought in the presence of God, I do not believe that anybody on that dais has a racial prejudice bone in your bodies. I really don't. Now, some of you may say, Henry, you need to quit. And I don't care. I don't mind you telling me to quit. I've already asked for some extra time to preach a little bit, so let me do that. And for 18 years, you all, starting in 1990, and Rex, and Jim Gilli, and Frank Visco, and quite a few of you all who had a few bucks, after I was elected the first time, you guys kept me in here for 18 years sitting at that dais. And I did every doggone thing I could to make this city the best it could be. And I didn't mean to cry like this. This don't make no sense. But I want you all to know, and then tonight, Rex, when you got up, and I was looking for the preacher that was gonna pray, and I said, I hope they ain't here, and I get a chance to pray, and doggone, here come the mayor praying. And I appreciate it. I want you to know, I appreciate that. So I appreciate all of you all. And I hate like the devil to see you walk away, Daryl. I really do. I just think you should be still in the mix, but you do what God tells you to do, and that's how that needs to be. And that's how that needs to be with every one of you, is to be how the Lord would have you to be. Now, I have some bullet points that I want to read.
Wait a minute, you said 30 seconds, Henry.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm teasing you.
Okay, then, then that's good. Well, you chewed on me enough last night, so you teased me, now you tease me right now. But I want you to know, Rex, I love you very, very, very much, and I appreciate being able to walk up with you, me and my daughter, and said to you at, where was it that we had dinner that night?
Lemon Leaf.
Lemon Leaf, to ask you to take the place, because I was 75 years old at that time, and the Lord has allowed me to get to 90, so I'm 90-headed off of 91. But I do want you all to know that we are saddled, we are saddled. Rex, every last one of you are saddled with leading this city the very best you know how, and then asking God for some... and then asking God for some help. And then when you get that, you go as far as you can and do like I used to do when I was playing football. At that time, we could only, we played both defense and offense. But when I got tired, I'd raise my hand and say, I can't go no further. So I ask you guys, and that may be what Darrell is saying, I can't go any further. And each one of you should do that. But while you're there, make sure that everything is equitable. Equitable. Now, let me get to these points, and thank you for letting me have the extra time. And Jason, doggone, I, 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 we've had some good city, city managers that know quite about it. And Jim Gillie and I would fight and still got business done. But Jason, you, you topped them all as far as I'm concerned. We're really glad that you're here, and the council, and the staff, you got good staff. And thank you so much for that. Now, tonight I joined with other leaders in the community, both men and women. And I joined with them to give recommendation to our City Council that we believe that will help to unite and strengthen our city's confidence in our leadership. My recommendations are as follows. To create a system of leadership within our community with emphasis on those in our community that are more vulnerable. The goal is to demonstrate a clear desire for unity in our community based on policing that is proactive in our, in our pursuit of diversity, equity, and inclusion. All of our community members have a right to want to feel safe. And you all as leaders, our City Council, and those of us who consider ourselves pastors and other leaders in the community, we need to be able to support and help you to create that kind of an environment for our community. Our leadership, that's you guys, and I watch you. And some would say this, some would say that, but I watch you, and here's what I saw. Your leadership has shown growth through the formation of the Social Equity Commission and the Criminal Justice Commission, making it just right for the next step, which is the promotion of a captain that embodies the two, and that is equity and justice. I'd like to challenge every last one of you and every last one of us as leaders. I'd like to challenge you and encourage you to recommend the, the appointment of a captain that is a testament to these values that we've mentioned earlier. By the power of God that is in us, and by the love that we have in us for our brethren and sisters in the community, we can do this. And there ain't no doubt about it. And I certainly appreciate you all letting me take advantage of a few minutes of extra time. But I love you, thank you so much. And I don't know if you have any questions to me, but I, well, let me sit down.
Lyndi Williams. Hi, Lyndi.
Good afternoon, all. Thank you for letting me take the time. I'd just like to say that two things can be true at the same time. Can recognize those deputies that were here?
I need you to speak a little louder.
I said, two things can be true at the same time. We can recognize those deputies that were here that de-escalated. Bravo, because I'm thinking it could have gone sideways. With that being said, you should also be able to recognize excessive use of force. Sheriff Luna has.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, you should also be able to recognize excessive use of force, Sheriff Luna has, in regards to specifically the Winco incident and Deputy Kurt and the other deputy. With that being said, as the mayor, I understand that you're their employer because you're contracted with the county, and you should support your employees. I wish more employers would do that, okay? But also, we have to be honest. And it was excessive, it was excessive enough, and we are allowed to film. We got information back specifically from Lieutenant Rivers underneath Sheriff Luna under Constitutional Policing that says, in case people have forgotten, yes, the Constitution does apply to us too. It really does, right? A lot of people don't think that, I get it, but it does. We have our God-given inalienable rights, and it is shown according to the settlement agreement. And I've been here a long time, so before the settlement agreement, I knew there was unbalance. Look, if somebody does something wrong, they should be penalized. But to say that you don't think he should be fired, what does it take for someone who is actively in a position of power, who is abusing that power, to be fired? You know what that says to us? It says we don't count, it says we don't matter. My tax dollars come here. When I came in, I visited with the interim captain. We got some lieutenants, we got some other folks in the back, so on and so forth. I don't want trouble, you know? But under your leadership, I know you're gonna be you, but in the future, and hopefully it doesn't go into the future, but can you just maybe consider that we matter too? Yeah?
I think you know I respect you, I listen to you, and I, I think you oftentimes come in with some real wisdom. And I want you to know that if you don't know that.
Thank you.
I'd also like you to recognize the position I'm in. I do not have the luxury of seeing a short video clip and rushing to judgment. I do not have the luxury of looking at that and saying, oh, he took her down because she was videoing him. The, I don't have the, and I never want to be that person who just takes an event and uses it to get his picture in the paper. Or uses it to, you know what I'm talking about. Well, you should, you should. Okay, we're not doing this. You want the meeting to stop? Just keep doing it. An investigation is being conducted.
Yes.
And until that investigation is concluded, and we have all of the facts, that deputy is innocent, just like everyone else has a presumption of innocence. You know, and if you want to, you want to adopt a mob mentality, remember that it has a way of coming back around at us. It has to be, it due process.
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
You, you know what I'm saying?
They do have a right to due process. However, we should also be allowed to have the benefit of the doubt.
I'm sorry, what?
We should also be allowed to have the benefit of the doubt.
Of course, I agree. If it doesn't apply to everybody, it will only apply to the people who have power. That's how it works. It has to apply to everyone. And just because the color of the deputy is different, doesn't mean it shouldn't apply to him. That deputy was taken out of the field, the investigation is ongoing. There's a lot of factors in play with that. And until I get the final report, I am not going to sit in judgment of him without all of the facts. And what I never saw anybody, any of you, looking at, is you, you know, you, you jumped to the individual. This individual's a racist. But not one person has asked me, is he following his training? Is he following the protocol? If it's the protocol, please, I will let you talk. Let me talk. If he was following his training, that is how he is ordered to proceed. Shouldn't we be looking at the system? Shouldn't we be looking at what they're taught, rather than trying to crucify him? What if he was absolutely within protocol?
I, I agree with that statement. And, and however, I do have knowledge from Lieutenant Rivers, Melanie Rivers, of Constitutional Policing underneath Sheriff Luna. And that, sir, is not their use of force policy that has not been laid out completely under the 16th semi-annual report. They were going off a previous, and even under the previous use of force, it was excessive. And I have that.
It certainly may have been.
I have that.
And when the report is done, and we have all of the facts, that is the time to take action.
I will agree with that as well, but I'm hoping that when the facts come out, and it does show excessive use of force, if it shows excessive use of force, that you will be the stand-up man that you're showing right now and say so, please.
There's no question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Johnson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. You know, I wrote something nice and pretty for y'all today. But I don't know if I'm gonna do it. I was here that day Pastor Doris was basically named the vice mayor, or not vice mayor, the deputy mayor. Yes, yes, so I remember that day very well. I remember that day why we were here. And you know that I don't come here at all and, and speak, so I wanted to say something in regards to what you said to our President V. Jesse. We are in constant communication with Sheriff Luna, and we know that you do not hire the captain, but you have a really strong say-so in who is hired. I also know how the last captain was hired, talked to Sean Cannon. He told me that you were in favor of hiring, I think it was his sister, Angela. They told me, and I told that to our president. And we all know that. So this is not a thing where we're telling you that, hey, this is what you have to do. We're just telling, we're just advising and requesting that you look and see what's going on in this community for us. You said something, and this is the same playbook, Mr. Mayor, that has been said since the moment black folk have been taken from Africa and put on this planet, on this, on this continent. Whenever we stand for black folk, and we stand for a black initiative, for black folk, it's called racist. Well, today, we're not taking that today. We are gonna stand, and we're gonna stand for black people. In this city, I don't think that we've ever had a black captain. I have all this beautiful stuff, I can't even get to it, Mr. Mayor, but I'm gonna say this. I need a long time, I'm a preacher too, so you know I'm. Look, look, you think, you think this guy's long-winded. Anyway, I won't, I won't, but.
Never mind.
In all seriousness, though, listen. Yes, I'll take five minutes, yes, absolutely, thank you. I was looking at the report from the monitors, and I'm just gonna read a couple things. It says that the LASD does not have a culture in place that requires managers and supervisors to question or hold accountable those under their command. Rather, there is a culture of being defensive when it comes to acknowledging and being willing to correct poor performance. Rather than holding themselves and staff accountable, station managers often seek to justify and explain away problematic incidents and patterns. And we've been seeing patterns for a very long time within the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department here in Lancaster. Some of y'all know me, I wasn't always a preacher, I used to run these streets, I used to be out here. And even talking to people today, there are some terrible patterns and practices that the Sheriff's Department has been using outside of their use of force policies. I believe that everything starts and ends with leadership. If things go well, leadership gets praised. If things don't go well, leadership gets the critics. Well, in the city of Lancaster, the Sheriff's Department, leadership has been not doing so well for quite some time. And we are appreciative of what Sheriff Luna has done by removing the former captain so swiftly. But we also know that there's still work to be done. And this is why we're here today. We're not here to demand anything, we're here that you all take this into consideration. Very clear of how the process went last time, we're asking for the process to be the same, but we're asking for more representation from the community, community leaders that are in this, not that you guys are not in the streets, but we are out there every single day. And we're listening to our, our friends, our families, our relatives of what goes on. We are asking that you guys take strong consideration of when you do hire, because there's gonna be two captains, I'm sure that you know, there's gonna be two captains for each station. At least one of them should resemble the people who have the most interaction with law enforcement in this city, and that's black folk.
That would actually be brown.
No, 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 I said interaction.
I think it would still be brown.
Well, you may have more brown numbers, but when we're talking about interaction, either good, well, a lot of times it's not, most of the time it's not. When it comes to abuse, it's black folk. We need leadership that one resembles, again, those, the people that they serve, and the people that are being brutalized, really, out in these streets. And we need someone that's gonna be able to hold the deputies accountable, bring a sense of culture humility within this station, and hold people accountable, Mr. Mayor. That's what we're asking today. We're not coming up here demanding anything from anybody. We are just wanting to see change, just like everyone said here. We all love this city. I've been here my whole life, I'm 49 years old, I probably got some of y'all beat. I've seen a lot of things happen in this city. I've seen some good, I've seen a lot of bad, and I'm hoping to see some, some more good. And I think that you, City Council, you guys have, or you're in a good position right now to make some significant change. And again, I stand with the people. We are tired. I don't know if you know what it feels like to be driving down the street. I haven't done a crime since 1990-something. I think it was in the 90s, I'm pretty sure. I was pastor, yeah, I was, it was 90s. But I still, Mr. Mayor, in, in all seriousness, I still get nervous when law enforcement gets behind me. Now, as Lyndi said, our comrade said this, we should applaud those that do well, but we should also hold those accountable that need to be held accountable. And again, I really believe that everything starts with leadership. You're at the top. Things go well.
I miss that.
I said, everything starts with leadership, and you are at the top. Things go well, you get the praise. When things don't go so well, you get us.
I, I don't think that I'm at the top.
Well, you're the mayor, you, 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 I just heard you say no to someone, and they said, okay, Mr. Mayor, no, you at the top. You are at the top, when you have that much juice.
When it comes to the Sheriff's Department,
Yes.
the sheriff tells me what he's gonna do.
Yes.
I can influence it, but he tells me.
And that's what we're asking for, we're asking for influence.
Quite frankly, I like Sheriff Luna. I think he, he is definitely, has a lot of promise. You know, it's too early to tell, but it seems to have a lot of promise.
He's an elected official too, and we've, we've had, like I said, many conversations with him. If he continues this path, it's good, but if not, just like he came in, we can vote him out. But we are very much aware of how the process goes, but we also know that you guys can do something when you.
Brian, I wanna, while I got everybody here. Brian, I wanna, while I got everybody here, I wanna, you know, the, the people I appoint, I asked them to read a book called Upstream. You know, it's a wonderful book, anybody who's involved in social issues should read it. When the Social Equity Commission was describing to me what it's like to drive while black, they pull, pull you over, they said you match a suspect in a robbery. My response to that was, you do. What was dispatched? What was dispatched? Blackmail, 30 to 40, white car, right? I think we could do so much better if we looked at the procedures. Why, why does that go out in the first place? You know? I mean, because you're, the trade-off is support of the community. I mean, there's a lot of angry people because of dispatching like that. Why, and, you know, this is 2023, why, why isn't, why aren't we using AI to decide, is there sufficient information to dispatch? There's a lot we could be doing. But what I get really frustrated with is people looking for simple answers. Tell me the statistics, tell me the research that says having a black chief of police or a black captain makes any difference at all? If you can show me that...
Well, there are, there are numbers that shows that when you have leadership, especially in law enforcement, that resemble the individuals that have most interaction, that crime goes down, it brings a different culture within that department, right? So I think what you're saying is policies definitely need to change. And trust me, though Luna is seemingly doing the right thing so far, we're still holding them accountable for their procedures and their practices, right? So when we're talking about bringing someone in that looks and resembles the community, right, we have a whole shift and change. You know, so it's hard, and I get it, it's hard for a lot of people to understand, someone told me, some wise man told me one time, he said, you know, a fish doesn't know it's wet. It's habitat.
It's a good metaphor.
Right? So this is what we see here, is that a lot of people don't recognize and understand because this is normal, right? This is life. For us, we're out of the water. We know. We're dry. So all we're asking is that, yes, policies need to change, and we're fighting for policy change, and we're, and we're making strides on that. But I also believe that locally, right here, we can make some, some significant changes. And it is simply, and I'm not just saying just hire a black person just because they're black, that's not what we're saying. Definitely needs to be qualified, and that's why we would like some of us, or someone from the community leadership, to be a part of this election. I was asked, by the way, to be there, and now something happened, I didn't get the invite for the last one. I think if I was there, it would've been different.
What, what I'm looking for is people looking in the, looking forward, not looking in the rearview mirror. I'm looking for people, I'm looking for people whose role is to create, to build. And quite frankly, I haven't figured you out yet.
I know you haven't. That's my, that's my plan, Mayor, that's my plan. So listen, you, we always have to look behind us to see where we're coming from, so that we can know where we're going. And that's always what we're doing, we're always looking at our past, we make sure that our past does not creep up into our future. We can no longer build a stronger future, sometimes until we fix our past.
Do you recognize, do you recognize that we have a department that is 40 men down?
I do.
Forty men down.
I do, I do. I am in communication...
And the deputies are afraid to do their job. I wonder, and, and so we had, we come to a, a, a point where are both sides, if you want to call them sides, going down the wrong paths as to what do we want? What is the goal? To me, the goal is, is our families are safe. That's my only goal. You know, and, and I know what the demographics of my city are, right? I took a lot of criticism for, for the positions I took on law, law enforcement. But it was black children that stopped dying. It was black children. It wasn't white kids being killed in those gang shootouts. I mean, and I didn't, I didn't see any support from you. What I saw was just criticism. And it's difficult for me. It, 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 you know, to, to listen to people call me a racist is, is very difficult for me. You know, I, I have a black grandchild. I mean, my goal is to make families safe. And anybody that wants to help me do that, I'm, I'm all open arms. But I'm not going to sacrifice their safety for political expediency.
Absolutely.
You want to see where that leads? Look at LA. Look at downtown LA. You know, they stopped enforcing the laws. You want to help with that? I'm more than happy to, to have you help.
I hear you. If you, if you, you can ask Pastor Darryl and Sean, I am the least political person in this room right now. I can care less about political anything, I really can care less. I'm here because, one, I have a call from God, and I, and two, I stand with and for the people. And we want to be safe too. And sometimes we're not, we're not, we're not safe by the ones that are supposed to protect us. We, one day, Mr. Mayor, you're gonna have to, or your son is gonna have to have that talk with your grandson.
We, we...
And you know what that, or granddaughter...
Granddaughter, and we are very aware, I mean...
I don't want to have that talk no more.
When that baby was born, everything changed in how we view all of this, because now it's up close and personal.
So, 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 so again, so I believe that, Mr. Mayor, I think that we can help. I don't think that we're not, I know that we're not here to be adversaries to anyone, we are simply here to stand for our people. That's it. And we want to see a safe city as well, especially from those who are called to keep us safe.
This is probably not the forum to do this, but I, I think the re-education, if you want to call it, is not just in the department, but it's with us, the citizens. You know, the, like it or not, their, their job is high-risk. It just is. When I get pulled over, all the windows go down. My hands are on the steering wheel, because I know he has to see inside the car. And I also know that if I want to be a jerk, who's gonna lose? Because I've lost that fight a few times, you know? I think that we could all do a lot better in how we interreact, interact. And I think it's a mistake to say it's all one-sided. It's not. It's not. If we want a community, we have to be a community.
Yes, I'm painting this picture, and I know my time is up, so even as a preacher, I know when to sit down. I'll paint this picture, and what you said is that we should just, we need to learn how to do things differently. I want you to imagine something. You witness someone who you love dearly be murdered by the very ones who are supposed to protect. Not only do you see the ones that you loved murdered by the ones that are supposed to protect, but these individuals now are almost paraded around as heroes. I want you to imagine, time and time again, being stopped and asked if you're on probation or parole just because you're going to the store. I want you to imagine you driving your nine-year-old son in the middle of December, and you're pulled over nine times because you fit the description, nine times. I want you to imagine that your little daughter has to see you get thrown to the fence and frisked simply because you look a certain way. So forgive us if when we're pulled over, we don't want to roll the window down. Forgive us if, when we're asked simple questions, we don't want to answer those questions. This is our life every single day. That person I was talking about...
I'm just telling you what I do.
I, I hear you, and I'm just telling you what we see and what we do. So that, and, and so, Mr. Mayor, again, the reason why I'm here today is to hopefully to encourage you all that we can come together. We have two captains that are gonna be in Lancaster and Palmdale. Let's just be on the right side of righteousness.
I am curious as to why you're here and not in Palmdale.
Oh, we'll be in Palmdale.
Not with this request.
We'll be in Palmdale. But, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your time, City Council. Thank you, guys.
Mayor Paris, if I may speak before the speaker.
Of course, of course.
I just, I just, I thank the community for coming here tonight and clearing some of this up. I think that understanding is key. I was born black, I was raised black, and I'm gonna die black, and I'm proud to be black. And I understand that when it comes to be born black, and when it comes to be raised black, I understand that not every black cop, just because they're black, is gonna be a good cop. So I don't think that, again, to reiterate what the speakers that we just heard, and we'll hear more, that the ask is for the sheriff's captain to be black. I think the ask is for understanding that the, to, with Mr. Pastor Johnson's point, have a captain that has the understanding and is able to share to the Sheriff's Department the understanding that, just like we fit a description, how we can fit a description, each one of those cops, each one of those deputies that we just recognized today fit a description to a black person that was a bad cop. And it's important to understand that. And right here, in the presence of my bishop, and in the presence of Bishop Hearns and Bishop Jesse, who I do not believe is racist, I reject the spirit of division and discontent because what I'm hearing, and from what I know after talking to our, our mayor and our council, and what I know from after speaking to members of the community, is that at the end of the day, on this issue, we are all on the same page. We all agree that there are qualifications that the captain needs to meet, and the city understands that. So being raised black and being born black and being a black man in America, with a black son in America, I understand the preference for a black captain. And I don't think that that preference is wrong. I have that preference. And I'm sure there are members of other races who have a present preference for a different race. So that's the preference. My expectation, being born black and being raised black, is that there will be a black person that meets that qualification. But I also understand the reality. And the reality is, at the end of the day, no matter what this council does, no matter what this council decides, or no matter what our mayor decides, at the end of the day, the decision is up to the sheriff. And so I appreciate the community coming and expressing what their preferences are and representing a section of our community that shares those preferences and understands the history of our community. But I also would just reiterate that, in the day, the sheriff makes the decision. And so, at, when we talk about understanding each other, I think that a lot can get lost in translation, especially if you're not born, raised black. But, but being in this position as deputy mayor and coming where I came from, I'm also a student of history. And I understand that, at the end of the day, I wouldn't be sitting where I'm sitting if it wasn't for the work that V. Jesse Smith, that Pastor Brian Johnson, and other members and senior members in the community did, Bishop Doris, with this mayor and with this council, dating all the way back to Bishop, to Bishop Hearns. And so I just would like to reiterate that spirit of togetherness, even though everybody disagrees, I wouldn't be here if progress wasn't made. And so I welcome this, because when things like this happen, you get somebody like me. So thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members and all of you assembled here. I want to speak from my heart to your heart, under the umbrella of missed opportunities. And I preface this with sincere thanks for the endeavor that was taken place under the leadership of you, Mayor, at the last appointing of the station captain. Thank you for that. There are few things in life that logic teaches us, that are viewed from the perspective of missed opportunities. While some are unrecoverable, such as a word spoken or an arrow released, the narrative of an African-American captain serving locally is an attainable opportunity that should not be missed. And with the history of selecting local law enforcement leadership, it also stands as an option that is recoverable. Without regard to the elements and factors that created diversification of this valley, the opportunity is present for your direct participation and shaping to ensure that the leadership of this local station is representative of its citizenry. This isn't a matter of majority or minority, but inclusivity. When exercised by the power of your affirmative vote for the same, you shall have seized the moment to best represent your commitment to serve the total community. The climate of this moment, saturated by the hopes and dreams of a more progressive and healthier tomorrow, gives you the greatest window of opportunity for a unanimous recommendation for an African-American captain at the Lancaster Sheriff's Station. Don't let this transformative and redemptive opportunity pass you by. That's my time, and I certainly do thank you for giving me this moment.
I do have a prepared statement, but in light of the personal attack that was directed to me by you, Mr. Mayor, I would ask for some time to respond to that accordingly. I have a prepared statement, I'd like to prepare that for the record, but in light of your attack, I would like additional time accordingly, if that be granted.
No.
Very well. Let me say good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and all who are present. My name is V. Jesse Smith, and I serve as Chair of the Antelope Valley African-American Leadership Coalition. This evening, I rise to the podium to ask this august body of leadership to change our community. The recent events of the use of force by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, which has gained national attention in our community, demand that we, as a community of leaders, engage in unprecedented actions by ushering in a new change that will help change the culture and practice. I'm gonna say that again, change the culture and practice of LASD in their relation to African-Americans and other cultures in our community. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, there is a segment population of our community, particularly black people, who have been victims of excessive use of force by rank-and-file LSAD deputies, as seen by videotapes over the past few weeks. I, and I, and I represent a segment of that population that feel unsafe, unprotected, and unsecure by law enforcement in place who were designed to protect us. While this feeling is not intended to cast a spurgeon on all of LSAD rank-and-file deputies, it is intended to highlight that there is a culture and practice within LASD that must be changed in true policing, if true policing is to be effective in our community. Therefore, on behalf of the Antelope Valley African-American Leadership Coalition, I come before you tonight asking you to usher in a new change in LSASD by recommending to Sheriff Robert Luna that part of his search for the next captain of the Lancaster Sheriff Station be an African-American female or male who is qualified, committed to policing our community, and who is sensitive to the needs, the hurt, and the pain of the African-American community and the community in general that we're experiencing right now. This request for a qualified African-American female or male captain over the Lancaster Sheriff's Station is not new to you. Before the appointment and selection of Captain John Leckervian, this body considered and explored the possibility of recommending and appointing an African-American captain over the Lancaster Sheriff's Station for reasons decided by this body... reasons decided by this body, you chose to not move forward with that recommendation, which resulted in the captain that we had. You now have an opportunity to revisit this selection and recommendation process. And I ask you, and I ask that you do so with the same intentionality you once had when this battle was before you. There are at least seven to ten qualified African-
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. You're done. Hey, I'm the chair. I get to say when you're done, and you know that. And, and once again, once again, once, yes, you can say the last statement.
I'll say this last statement. Hear me well. I am not suggesting, please listen closely, I am not suggesting that color or blackness is a prerequisite for being a captain of the Lancaster Sheriff's Station. But I am saying that it is time for an African-American to be placed in that position to help change the culture and the practice regarding the way policing has been conducted in our community. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council-
Thank you, Jesse.
I didn't come tonight as your adversary.
Yes, you did.
No, we didn't. No, I did not. No, I did not come tonight. No, I did not come tonight as your adversary. I came tonight to ask the city leaders to make a change-
But I really have no patience for people who make up the facts. It wasn't this board that picked the captain. And he knows that. He absolutely knows that. I'm, I'm tired of people taking our problems that are very real, and have very real-life consequences, and using it for their own personal aggrandizement, and for their own personal motives. And everybody knows, everybody knows that Jesse Smith wants to be Al Sharpton, and he takes every incident he can, and then does this. And it'd be fine if it didn't mislead so many, and stop the progress we could be making. When you polarize people, they don't talk to each other. As you saw, I have no interest in talking to Jesse. He, he posted that thing on social media. He knew it was a lie. He did it anyway. I'm sorry, I'm just not, I'm not going to work with people who do that. And if you want to vilify me for it, vilify me for it. It's not like it hasn't happened before. But I think we're making serious progress, real progress, with, with not only the police, but with everything. And I think people like Jesse Smith turn it back. They don't, they don't make it go forward. You could disagree with me, and, okay, disagree with me. But that's what I believe. Now, where are we?
I, I just want to make, say, and say something. What was said was a little misleading about what took place for the current captain. Sean was there, I was there, along with the mayor, the city manager, and there were four other people. We voted on a female, black captain to take the reins at our station. That had, she had never run a station before. She had never done anything like this. And the majority of people turned her down, with Mayor Paris voting for her. The second one was, I believe his last name was Bell, Easterling. And he was a black gentleman that we voted unanimously to put on as our next captain. When they all came in, we all asked every one of them that, would they be willing to move within a district boundary of Lancaster? When you live two hours away, you need the response. We need them there. We asked all of them that question. That was one of the first questions. They all said yes. Mr. Easterling was voted unanimously as a black captain for the station. He turned it down. He turned it down. John Leckriven was the third person, and the third choice from this group of people, and he accepted. On the day that he took office, I received several phone calls. I even called Daryl in regards to it, from the black community, saying, "We will replace him." This is not right. You should have had a black captain. I'm just saying, as far as the mayor's votes, he did everything possible to have a black captain, to have that. It didn't work out, but we did everything that you're asking for us to do at that last meeting. We did everything. Sean was there. Sean will tell you what took place. The mayor thought it was a very good idea to have a black captain for the, to change the culture and the practices. Okay? The mayor did that. Me and the mayor got into heated discussions during that, and-
Me too.
And Daryl. In regards to that, I thought John Leckriven was an exceptional captain. I thought John Leckriven was turned away because of the color of his skin. And Henry, you know me, that's, that is just not the way that, that I work. And that is just wrong. They called for his head the day of his first day on the job. So when it happened two years later, was I surprised? No. I was not surprised. But this is why you get the reaction from our mayor, that has tried so hard to work with everybody, and to make it a greater city than it already is. So we do listen. We do take what everybody says in hand, but we just don't publicize everything that's out there, and, and make it a, a big deal. We're trying to make it a greater city. So with that-
Thank you, Marvin. The, you know, I want to clarify something. The reason I was, was wanting Angela so much is because she had a clear appreciation for 21st century innovation. That we don't have the budgets to do it the way we used to. We need to embrace technology in order to make the people safe, create a safe environment for them. I was incredibly impressed with her in that she had the safest jail in the country during COVID. That requires intelligent decision-making. And she told me how she did it, and it was science-based, and it was effective, and, and then she had to fight off the, the, wanting to put the men in her jail. And she, you know, she just wouldn't tolerate that, because it would have brought the disease into the jail. I thought she had a lot of courage. I, I loved her for a captain. I also quite, and I don't, you know, I'm not very good at concealing how I feel. The science is pretty clear. Women make better managers. It just does. I mean, it's brain structure, a lot of reasons why they're better managers. My office is run by women. The lawyers go out and do the hunting. But the women run the place. And I know that's gonna create a lot of criticism, but so be it. You know, I'm 71 years old. What are people gonna do to me? We're gonna get through this. We'll get a good captain. But what I told the sheriff is I want a captain with a clear understanding of basic science principles, and how you can do regressions, and, and find ways to change things when you need to change them, improve things where you need to improve them. And that's what I'm looking for. That will trump color. That will trump color. You give me two people that can do that, one black, one white, of course, I'm gonna take the black officer, because I think that's progress. I think that's moving it forward. And if she's a woman, she's probably in, at least the way I look at it. But I, when I appoint committees, I, I want them to be independent. I don't want to dictate how they vote. And the people that are close to me know that. So there's the, the long and the short of it. As to Mr. Smith, I think that he is more concerned with his own self-interest than he is with our community's self-interest. And I've known him a very long time. Steve Hill? How's that for serendipity?
Good evening, everyone, council, Mayor Paris. I'd like to tell you, in this instance, I agree with you. Color should never be a prerequisite for hiring. And I wore a badge for, for 10 years, and I'm just here to kind of inform everybody that accountability is what we really need in law enforcement. The culture of policing needs to be checked, and people need to be held accountable. If you, you guys probably noticed that we don't have Captain Schaefer in the Palmdale Sheriff's Station no more. There's a reason for that. It's, it's just absurd. I don't know where Jesse went, but all, all the black pastors in here know what I've been going through the last few years with law enforcement. I'm gonna be running for Congress, for one, to represent the people, but for two, to expose law enforcement in Antelope Valley. I've been here for 32 years, and for 32 years, law enforcement has been broken. And I do believe the biggest problem, the biggest reason, is because political figures, the political power structure is too closely aligned with law enforcement. Anytime you have a state representative and a sheriff of a very large policing agency co-endorse each other, that's over-familiarization. You can't, you, you gotta have a divide between law enforcement and politics. Because every election cycle, what happens? All the politicians and law enforcement kind of combine and help each other, which I find to be a conflict of interest if you're really serving the people. But before I go, I would like to thank you and extend a note of appreciation for working with the organization that I've been affiliated with, which is the Satanic Temple. We're gonna be holding a after-school Satan Club over at the library, and I would just like for everyone to come. It's, it's basically something that's structured on STEM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math, and some arts and crafts. No baby eating and nothing like that. So some, some of you guys are gonna be disappointed. And I also do stand-up comedy, and there's a free comedy show we're having on August 24th. Council member, Daryl Doris, that's, that's gonna be in recognition of your resignation to honor, to honor you with some laughs before you go.
Now, that, that I can go to.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a safe space, 'cause I do political humor, and I talk about both political gang affiliations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Yeah, I need to clarify, I'm not going to the Satan. You know, the, that name certainly is a barrier to entry. Okay, Fran, you're up. Well, I guess you're not, but come on up. Come on down. Yeah. Fran knows I love her.
Yes, I do know that. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, and city council, staff, and everyone that's here, and thank goodness for the ones that stayed, because they need to hear a lot more good, and a lot of things that are good happening in this city, in this town. I'm, as you know, I'm an advocate for this town, for the city of Lancaster, and also for the Antelope Valley. And I see a lot of things, and what we were , you were, I, ooh, sorry. I really didn't know what I was gonna speak about tonight. I had no inclination until everybody started saying what they were saying, and I took some notes. First of all, I want to thank, and give the deepest gratitude to our sheriff's department, because they did something for me. They, they went, I wasn't even home, but they, my, one of my, and he works for Lancaster, he's a friend of mine, works for Parks and Rec, not Parks and Rec, Public Works. Anyway, he goes and checks on me once in a while, 'cause he knows I'm aging, and so forth, and so on. But since he, since I didn't answer, I'm gonna just give you a quick, quick scenario, because the reason why I say about the sheriff's department, and the, and the, and the fire department. Anyway, I was not home. And I have a thing with my neighbor that I tell him, "I'm leaving," so that he can, he takes care of my house, and I take care of his when we're much over each other. Anyway, long story short, since my friend from Lancaster didn't, I didn't answer the phone, I didn't answer the door, but my music in the house was still on, but he looked in my garage from the windows down, and he saw my car was still there, my, my power chair was, everything was normal. So he thought something had happened to me. And he thought I was lying on the floor somewhere. So he went to sheriff's department, and the sheriffs came, the fire department came, and they, they broke down my door. They had to break down the door, and to get in to check on me. And I know that they got in. Well, the long story short of it is that my, finally, my neighbor saw all this going on, and he comes out, and he says, "Well, Fran's not even here. She's in San Diego." I wasn't home. But the thing of it is, and I consider them angels, gee, my goodness. Anyway, my angels, they came to protect me, to take care of me, and I, I can't forget that. And it's in my heart. And I know there's a lot of little incidents and things happening in there, but it was all good. My friend had thought that something happened to me. The fire department, the sheriff's department had come to check on me to make sure I was okay. But I also want to, real quick, 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 I wanted to say about the MetroLink, because, see, I'm an advocate, but I'm also commissioner for the, okay, for the, for the county, and for everyone, especially Lancaster. I am one of your advocates in the county, and I, and as far, and I look out, and I see, and I've been watching, 'cause I go on the MetroLink quite often now, since I have to go downtown for my meetings, and I have noticed a change, that they are checking tickets. They are being more resourceful, I mean, more conscious, the, the, I forgot what their, their title. The ones that watch the trains.
Conductor.
Yeah, conductor, right. Thank you. They, they're very conscientious, and I have seen a lot of changes in there, good, to the good. I also have seen a lot of changes downtown. And I know there's been a lot of talk about the, the things that are happening. There's some goodness and bad, but there's a lot more good happening than there is bad.
Thank you, Fran.
And I wanted to bring that up, because I'm there, and I'm watching. But I'm there to watch for all of you, because I have a, I have a group for, for Metro, for Riders on the Move, senior group.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time, and God bless you all.
Last, but not least, David Paul. You know, you did, it was late, but okay.
What was your name?
You can be last. What, you're Lori, right?
Lori Walker.
Yeah, okay. The, the rule is, is it's gotta be in before the public comment starts. And the reason for that is because people would be holding back their cards so that they could be the last speaker. Okay, it's fine.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening again. You know, I love our city, and I love the American dream, and I can't imagine being led into combat by a captain who I had to worry about was either black or white. by a captain who I had to worry about was either black or white. I wanna worry that he's qualified, and if he fights his way there, I bet he is. So, you know, a friend of mine once said something that was very wise. He said that there's no justice in life other than in our own magic. And he's not talking about Harry Potter, Hocus Pocus. He's talking about the demonstration of mental power. And so, when you can hold your poise, when you can consider widely, when you can not fall for the hype. Mayor, they call people that stir up racial tension race hustlers. And there is a lot of that, because this country does such good, and I've been watching the Sheriff's Department for the last dozen years. There is a chance to improve it, but are there, there are steps being taken and progress being made. The point is that a black captain is not gonna automatically solve these problems. I think about Tyree Nichols. He was beat to death by six black cops. And so, if you have all-black police force, that wouldn't have helped Tyree Nichols one bit. It's the attitude, and yes, that has to change, and we have to change it together as a community. We have this opportunity, it's golden. But if we keep fighting and demanding things without science to back it up or any even common sense, you know, I got a ticket on the way to the Community Academy a dozen years ago for running a red light I didn't do. It was a speed trap on H and Sierra Highway. I thought it was a joke, because that night's class in the academy was on traffic. And I could've had that cleared by a hardened lieutenant or the captain, but I took my chances with the system. I went to, learned how to file a legal brief, went downtown and sat before a group of five individuals, all in black robes, and I couldn't get common sense to win. So I know darn well that there are advantages law enforcement has when they skirt and go around the law. And, you know, I don't want anybody here to think that I'm a racist, because I've been called that recently, and it hurts. It really hurts. You know, I love people, and I wanna see everyone rise, and I want everybody to know that if we are not going to come together and put aside some of this hatred that is just politically motivated. Mayor, I get that. We have to come together and learn to work together, and that's it, and I'm here helping. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Lori Walker, come on down. Before you start, what does your shirt say?
Good trouble, get into good trouble, necessary trouble, and help redeem the soul of America. John Lewis.
Thank you.
Black people in the Antelope Valley have been fighting for seats at tables when they should've just brought their own chairs. Their own chairs, their own tables. How about now?
Your bear's old.
What I wanna do is bring more attention to the systemic issues, because every few years or every so, ever so often, there's an incident that creates a crowd. There are cameras, there are people who take advantage of that situation, and exploitation occurs. I was really close to one of the cases that went national, so close that I didn't know about a press conference being held, nor the family, when the Sheriff's Department announced it and said they contacted the family. And then I find that there are local groups who organized and did all of these things together without the family's knowledge. And that's telling of how tied we are to our community and to our community's needs. One thing that I've been doing since I came out here, I started working at the Department of Veterans Affairs, and I saw systemic issues all the way through federal investigations. And I see patterns, and I've documented so much. I've testified in courts, and each system, state, county, city, I see patterns, patterns that need to be addressed. And with systemic challenges, we do need systemic solutions. And one of my biggest, biggest things to stress on people is the importance of education. I come from a law enforcement family. I have every branch of the military represented, except for Coast Guard, CHP, correct, State Corrections, and there are still systemic failures. So what I wanna do is motivate and lead by influence and example. So I will be at the city libraries bi-monthly, doing workshops on policies, procedures, pretty much letting the community do their own discovery, because a lot of people cannot even get attorneys out here. People who look like me. And when they do get an attorney, they're exploited. So one thing we need to do is work together, try not to deflect and say, "You need to go to that city, you need to go to this department," because that's what makes it systemic, systemic failures. When you have groups of people failing in their jobs, eventually, the community will take over. So let's embrace that. I'm good.
Thank you. Where's Brittany? Brittany? Get her contact information, would you? Thank you. So, anybody else have a burning desire? Javier, do you have a card?
I had one, Mayor, and then I took it back by mistake.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. I'm here representing AB Lula, and I thought it was extremely important to explain something to you, Bear. I think it'll help better understand the group that was here before you. I'm here to support that group, or all those groups, by the way. But the reason for it, we were all part of a huge meeting. You keep hearing about how we met with Sheriff Robert Luna. We did, we met with him twice already. And in one of those big meetings with thirty, forty of us, he very clearly stated that the people who make the decisions on hiring for captains is city councils. And I even asked for clarification, said, "Wait a minute, you don't decide yourself?" He said, "No." So you must get some sense of how we felt when I came in here and you said, "It's not our decision, it's the decision of Robert Luna." So we see you guys going like this, you know, pointing fingers at each other. But that's the reason why AB Lula came today. We were under the impression that this body is the one that decides, and we are here to ask for two things. One, if you are, you have any influence in the decision-making process, that you include some of us in the group that's going to interview, one. And second, that you make sure that, and I know you've done it in the past, you make sure Latinos and African-Americans are part of the interviewing pool, part of the people that are gonna be interviewed, those two things. I don't know, at this point, I don't know who's right. I don't know who to believe. Is it Luna, is it you?
I suspect we're just not communicating. You know, he tells the group that, but he hasn't told me yet. That doesn't mean that's not what his intention is. It just means that's not what he's told me yet.
Okay.
Right? But I didn't know that occurred.
That's exactly what happened, and I asked for clarity. I'm the one who rolled my hand and said, "Wait a minute, are you telling us this, this?" And the other, and he said, "Yes, that's what I'm saying." So that's why we're here, that's why we came.
So you can understand my disappointment with Jesse's posting on social media.
Mayor, I got that, I got that post today in the morning, and I didn't see what you saw. I saw a call for advocacy. I saw a call for us to come together and ask you for something, not cram it down your throat, not demand, none of that. I saw Liz School asked, because this is what we told the process was, so Liz School asked, and he considered this. I also came to ask that you consider African-American captain and a Latino captain, since they're looking at two. Let us try to get that going. And then you ask, "Well, is it important, is race important?" It should not be. It should not be. But is it? Oh, I could give you a perfect example, I don't know if I got the time, but.
You got the time.
AB, no, Palm, Pacoima, thirty years ago, we were trying to push a policy that restricted the number of alcohol outlets in Pacoima. We managed to get that done from ninety-five to fifty-five. Then Captain McBride started writing us. I didn't believe that it was gonna have any impact, but look at what we're seeing. A ten percent drop in DUI arrest rates, and it was all Latinos. Next year, Javier, another fourteen percent drop, keep going. This is having an impact. This is what we saw. But you know what it took? It took us to get rid of all the previous elected officials from Congress all the way down. I'm talking about Meriman, who was a champion of the UFW, but in our community, oh my God, not too good. But anyways, we got rid of Congress, Senator, Assemblyman, city representatives, cities from Pacoima, representing Pacoima, and San Fernando. And we put in people, and this needs to be a book, somebody's gotta write, about how all the elected officials in all those levels of government now were born and raised in Pacoima. And because of that, to talk to them and to get them to understand this issue was a no-brainer. We didn't have to twist arms anymore, we didn't have to convince, we didn't have to go before deaf ears. They all understood, and before we knew it, we were dropping crime rates and health rates and you name it. So it matters sometimes, you know, who we get. Then you get Lee Baca, and you go, "Oh, my God. Was it really good that we got a Latino in there?" Don't think so, huh?
Lee Baca was one of my closest friends.
Oh.
Lee Baca came to visit my father on his deathbed, and I cannot sit and listen to anybody criticize him.
But you saw what he did, Mayor. Okay, all right, sorry. Thank you.
But Javier, I appreciate your comments, I really do. I, it took me a while to realize that you really do have the best interests of the community at heart. I mean, you sometimes use a battle axe to convince people, but so do I.
Yeah, I noticed that similarly. Thank you, sir.
But for any problems we've ever had in the past, I want you to do, know that I really do believe you're sincere, and you do have good ideas. You also live in Palmdale, though.
I didn't say that.
Thank you. All right. Is that everybody?
I'd like to, are you asking for council comments?
Any comments.
I'd like to say thank you for Daryl Doris, for his service to the city, that we haven't always seen eye to eye, and, but we've always been friends. And I appreciate that, I appreciate you. I appreciate you attempting to do what you attempted to do, and that's what's important.
Thank you, Marvin. Thank you.
So, Mayor, I have two things. I might need to piggyback off of what Marvin said. I think that, Daryl, your time, and we ran together, I think you added true value to the council, and I appreciate you, so.
Thank you.
Just wanna share that. And then with that, too, I'd like to make a proposal tonight. Mayor, after listening to small business, I know this is not in alignment with what we heard tonight, but I was one of the, probably the only council member up here, that actually took up the solar initiative. And so, last week, we heated up the solar panels on the roof of my house, so I'm looking forward to the potential savings. So I do wanna let you know, and I'll report out.
Is it the Tesla program?
Yes.
Okay, good.
But I'd like to see us do one, especially in this troubled times with small business. I'd like to see us take a look at what could the city do using a similar program in helping small business? Because I think that that's, power bills aren't going down. And I think with a leap of faith, and what I truly believe I'm gonna get out of it, and what's available to all homeowners, I would like to see staff take a look at that. Great stuff. And I'll report out, and I'll bring my power bills and let you take a look at it.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see six months before, six months after.
Yeah.
I guess you have to do the whole year, so you match them up to the month.
You do, after, I learned a lot. So there was a lot of learnings I took in, so I, I'll be able to share when we get down the road. So, anyway, with that, thank you again, Daryl.
Thank you.
It was definitely a pleasure serving with you, Daryl. I'm going to miss you, we're all going to miss you, so hopefully you're still around, and we'll see you.
Yeah, thank you, Raj. Thank you. I'm still eating at Molly's, so.
Always.
All right. I guess this, before the mayor makes his comments, again, I appreciate, I see I'm already trending. So, social media is really fast, but again, thank you for serving the city. Lieutenant Bartlett, I wanna say thank you, man, acting captain. You didn't have to do what you did, and I'm still here for you in the Sheriff's Department in any capacity. You and Commander Neer, I appreciate you guys. People can say what they want, but we need, we need law enforcement, we know that. My building has been vandalized in two weeks, I've had three windows busted out, and I think we know who's done it. It's from the homeless. They ripped my camera down, so there's a lot of issues and things going on in the city. Mayor, I do wanna piggyback off of what my gentleman said. A lot of them did come, from what I found out tonight, because Sheriff Luna had told them to come see you, because I guess you have a lot of power. So I know you was really hard on Jesse, but I must say, in meeting with him.
Well, could somebody have told me that before the meeting started?
Hopefully you guys can have a conversation. And I will say this, since this is the last statement, I'm sure Marvin will say what he normally says about me, I love him to life. It never really has to do necessarily with color, but culture. Francis Ford Coppola did The Godfather, so one of the best movies ever made when it comes to gangsterism. Now, Spike Lee could've did it. He could've did it. But when it comes to knowing the culture and knowing the certain intricacies of Italians and making it authentic, it had to be Francis Ford Coppola. The same with Spike Lee doing, Doing the Right Thing. Only, only really, really black women know about a hot comb, pressing that hair. Hispanics know about making certain foods. And so it's never about just having a black to know black, it's about, because we have been so diverse, you have been really good. That's why you picked me, to have diversity, that's why you, matter of fact, I'm gonna say this, 'cause I'm leaving anyway, so he gonna have to deal with it. When I was deputy mayor, and Councilman Underwood resigned, I called you and asked, "Can I run?" And you told me, "No." I don't know if you remember that.
I do.
I was on my way to my national convention, and a very ingenious, intelligent, godly woman changed his mind.
She didn't change my mind? She told me I had to do it.
But one thing that I will say about the mayor, and he can say this, I never asked for this as far as, you know, I wanna do this, I wanna do that. I just kept telling him that God would show him. If you remember that conversation, you kept asking me, "What did I want?" And I said, "You're a Christian, the Lord will show you." I remember saying that, and we getting to know each other. You come into my church asking, "Do I have snakes?" I'll never forget that. That's an inside joke, y'all have picked that up if you knew religions. But I wanna say thank you, because even though like Marvin said, me, you, and him, we had our battles, but we respected each other, I believe. And we came to an understanding. And I may not serve on the council, but I do serve the city. So anytime any of you ever need me, I'm here. I want you to know that. All right, thank you, that's it. I'm good.
Thank you, Daryl. Just so everybody's clear, the next council meeting, I'll have a, I'll either have a committee to select your replacement or to advise me on selecting your replacement, or I will have your replacement, and then the council will vote on it. But that's how the procedure goes. And if anybody is interested in applying for that position, they should apply. Now, are there a few people I'm looking at? There are. But if somebody...
But if somebody comes along that is better, I'm taking the person who's better. And preferably, I'm acutely aware that we're all a bunch of men sitting here. Well, you're not sitting here, but, and, and that's, that is a factor that I'm not going to ignore. And, you know, despite what, what people might say, I actually believe to the core of my being that better decisions happen when you have diverse. Yes. People on the board. I, I had dinner with the Council General for China last week and he was telling me how when China closed its doors, progress stopped, you know? But when they, when the doors were open, they had great progress because of that diversity and, and that cross-culturalization. And we saw that when we created the first net-zero home that was affordable in the world, that was China and KB Homes, you know? That diversity really does work and so it's something I do intend to continue with on, on this council. And for those of you that find my approach disconcerting, I'm seventy-one, you don't have to live with me for too much longer. With that, I guess we go into executive session now, all right?
Yes, at this time, the city council will go into closed session for, to discuss closed session items one through twenty-eight as stated on the agenda. Thank you. In closed session, the council took up agenda items two and three. On item two, the council unanimously authorized the initiation of an action against Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department with regard to overtime and carpeting.
Allison, can you hang on one second because it's not being televised?
Oh, yes.
Jason, what is the, is it the gavel that turns it back on or?
It's mic.
Over back?
Does it matter?
Yes.
So Daryl, how was my prayer?
Oh, it was wonderful. Seriously. I was impressed. Think my later speaking, I'm sorry. Think we do a great job.
I think I probably will.
Oh, I think you do. You just gotta speak louder, I'm gonna have it up real loud.
It's mic cam.
I wear a lavalier in the courtroom, that's pretty good.
I just wore two since you said it.
Really?
Start checking yours. That's what you said. Problem with lavaliers is you can't use mine, you can't use your, I said, which one, how do you use that? I can't myself say.
Jesse Jackson used to do this thing, he'd wear the lavalier, but he also had the mic.
Okay, fish blade did.
And when you want it louder, you move in, you know?
Move in, grab it, or you know, if Shunbo was coming because he grabbed it, he was going to, it was the avenue, it was staying for, thank you. He just.
Is someone working on this or have we just seen?
Yes, yes, we are still using it.
Okay, what's up? Get the start again.
Oh, we're back on. All right, we're reconvening. City Attorney?
Yes, in closed session, the council took up agenda items two and three. As to agenda item two, the council unanimously authorized the initiation of litigation against Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department with regard to overtime and carpeting. And as to item three, gave direction to staff and legal counsel, no reportable action.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three at 5:00 PM. Carol, I'm going to drag myself home, having been beaten, bloodied and terrorized by the citizenry of my fine city. I'm coming home. Richard?
I just thought of something, I came in with a bang and left with a bang. I came in.